Well, it's hard to believe, but it is September 2nd. And I'm at 4:00 PM and I'm called as Lacey City Council meeting to order. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a published agenda for this evening and sent agenda. I don't think there's any changes. And again, motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing then all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries and we have approved the agenda and consent agenda items. First up on our agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. We do have one person who signed up. Let's bring him in.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wayne Olson, the resident of Lacey, and I am speaking in support of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I would like to share with you the conclusions of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC for short, which released the first part of their sixth assessment. Report a few weeks ago. This large group of leading scientists from around the world spent several years assembling these reports, which are issued about every seven years. You may recall that the IPCC was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for their fourth assessment report in 2007. And their fifth assessment report in 2013 formed the scientific basis for the Paris Climate Accord, signed by 194 nations in 2015. The sixth report adds an exclamation point to the urgency of solving the climate crisis by the nations when they meet at Glasgow, Scotland this November. The United Nations Secretary General warned that this sixth assessment report is a quote code red for humanity end quote. The report states that there is no remaining scientific doubt that humans are the cause of climate change using the term unequivocal. The forty page summary for policymakers contains eighty-two other conclusions and has been scrubbed word by word and approved by all the participating nations, including the United States. I sent an email to you last night, including web links to the report and the summaries. Other conclusions include the following. One. Global surface temperature will continue to increase until at least mid-century baked in by our past emissions. The Paris Climate Accord maximum warning goals of 1.5 Celsius and 2.0 Celsius Celsius will be exceeded during this century unless deep reductions in greenhouse gas emissions occur within the next few decades. Two. Limiting warming warming to a specifics level requires limiting cumulative CO2 emissions, requiring a reduction to at least net zero CO2 emissions. Three. Many changes due to past and future emissions are irreversible for centuries to millennia, especially changes in the ocean, ice sheets and global sea level. In other words, we will not be able to put that genie back in the bottle, especially if we continue doing what we're doing to the atmosphere. These conclusions should not be a surprise. They are the reason for the climate package now within the two infrastructure bills being negotiated in Congress now. It now appears that the climate package may be watered down to a level insufficient to meet the US chair of the goal of fifty percent carbon emission reduction by 2030. But the total US reduction goal may be achieved when state and local government actions are counted. That is why the TCMP is probably much more important than you think. Needless to say, I urge that you adopt, implement and fully fund the TCMP. My grandkids and yours are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne, and thank you for your constant, you know, advocacy. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is under ordinances. And we're going to turn it over to. Troy Woods to talk about our our final 2021 budget amendment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council. As the mayor stated before your consideration today is adoption of an ordinance that will amend the 2021 budget. And we have provided the Finance and Economic Development Committee a number of updates throughout the year, just to keep the integrity of the budget intact. We do have the full detail of the amendments as listed in Exhibit A. The staff report does provide some additional background for the more significant proposed budget amendments. And if it pleases the council, I'll just run through some of the more significant and maybe more. Items that are most of value to the to the council and to the public. So starting off with our general fund. You know, this council adopted or authorized the use and signage of an agreement that will provide services, which we call the mobile outreach team, which will provide seven day a week health services to the community for those people in crisis. So this contribution for Lacey is about $177,000. Back in June, the council authorized $95,000 for an agreement with senior services for the pilot program for a home share. And this is a program that will provide living arrangements where home providers offer accommodation in exchange for agreed upon levels of support. I do want to mention there are a couple amendments related to the Veteran Affairs Hub. Two different amendments and one is going to be funded through reserves and the Community Development Block Grant. And another will be fully reimbursed by the federal Veteran Affairs Administration. We do have one mid-year addition in terms of personnel. This is a new position within the Community and Economic Development Department. I believe the title is Planning and Development Services Manager. So we do have salary and benefit amendments being proposed. I also want to mention that the amendment does eliminate a $715,000 transfer. You'll remember that we wanted to look at a phased in approach for a water quality assurance fee within our water and sewer funds. But due to COVID reductions and being mindful of general fund dollars, as well as the fact that the water comp plan proposal actually addresses the needs for those projects to eliminate septic tanks within our region. So that transfer is no longer needed, so we're eliminating that from the budget. Jumping down to the Capital Equipment Fund. The council parliament remembers that within the 2021 adopted budget, there's $500,000 for police station enhancements. But in the end, the dollars are going towards equipment and technology improvements for police. So really, we're taking the monies that were used originally budget for budget or for building improvements and moving that to capital equipment. I also want to point out that this is going to be funded with a committed reserve designated by the council for building improvements or the new police station. But this actually doesn't qualify for that, in my opinion. So we found other reserves for that. And so that will keep the new police station reserve intact. I do want to point out within the Building Improvement Fund, there is $30,000 in the proposal for public art for the Vacy Gold Star Memorial. So we did manage to react in time to get that into the budget. There are some dollars in there, about $208,000 for basically the site preparation for the new museum. I do want to talk a little bit about a couple amendments being proposed for the new police station. So you'll see in there a couple of different amendments related to land acquisition. I would not say that land acquisition is imminent. There will obviously be discussions with the council, but we did want to preserve a space in the budget in case that does happen before the year end. We want to be prepared for that opportunity. Within the Water Operations Fund, there is a $400,000 amendment being requested for water meters, both in terms of buying water meters for inventory as well as replacing the transmission units for our radio read system. Our system is approaching fifteen years old. Those batteries and those units within those meters were expected to last ten years. So those are failing at a pretty high rate. So we're having to replace those units. Thus, the need for additional dollars there. Before I turn it back over to the council for discussion and questions. I do want to alert the council. We are expecting to come back to the council at the next meeting for an out of cycle amendment. So we'll be bypassing the finance committee. We did, we were alerted today that our Ford distributor is taking orders for larger pickups for 2022 already. And those have to be placed by the end of September. So we want to be in a position to do that. Normally, we would have the council consider that with adoption of 2022 budget. But with all the shortages in terms of supplies, especially the computer chips, we don't want to be in a position of not being able to replace vehicles next year. So we may have to place those orders early, which doesn't quite line up with our budget process. So I didn't want to give the council a heads up on that. So the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, thus amending the 2021 budget. And I'll turn it back over to you for any questions or discussion you might have.
Thank you. Again, motion. If you're talking deputy mayor, you're on mute.
So I move that we adopt ordinance 1598, amending the 2021 budget.
Okay. Been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Greenstein. Nope, you're on mute too.
Yeah, I see that. You mentioned, I think it was 208,000 for the prep on the museum. That money is grant money that we received, isn't it?
No, that is actually coming out of a reserve. So that is unfortunately no grant money is in this the site preparation. But you know, there's much of the much of the project thus far has been grant funded.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I guess the only other question, the only other part of this when we was going through the finance committee was that, you know, there is a budget amendment for the working group that's been going on for our on housing homelessness and where you need to add some more dollars to that. And so that's been an ongoing process. I just want to make sure the councils, you know, aware, aware of that and the additional dollars are needed to complete that process. Is there, is there any other? Questions?
Councilmember Kunkel has had his hand up for a while there, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't see him in my view. Okay, Councilmember Kunkel.
Vehicle. Troy, you mentioned that we need to get all the goods as good as far as orders. What are we in need of for new vehicles? Can you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part, council member.
You're talking about the Ford vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, can you elaborate a little more? What do we need?
The the announcement that we received today is was specifically for the larger pickup trucks. So thank F-250, F-350s. We do have a couple that are scheduled for replacements. We are looking at some, you know, some labor considerations that may also require additional vehicles. But we also want to analyze whether we want to place orders for the rest of our vehicles early too. If there's other announcements later on this year in terms of police vehicles, I think there's three police vehicles that are scheduled for replacement. There's also a transit van, a smaller kind of work van that's also slated for replacement. So we want to take a close look at all of the Ford vehicles, just to make sure we're not in a position where we can't replace vehicles for the entirety of 2022. So it may be a fairly sizable, sizable amendment. But when you look from year to year in terms of our replacement history, it's certainly within that kind of normal range. But.
So can you explain a little bit about how we do that? How we how we set aside money every year for the replacement of vehicles and what that schedule looks like? I don't think maybe everyone understands how we budget for that.
Sure, that's a great point, Mr. Mayor. So we, we basically have a car rental fund within our, within our budget. And all the departments pay fees each year. It's basically divided out into maintenance and operations. So think about just kind of the normal maintenance on a vehicle. The second part of that is a vehicle replacement charge. So we take the estimated life of every vehicle that we purchase and we collect replacement dollars on an annual basis over that life so that we do have those funds available for replacement when the time comes. So these are all anticipated replacements. They do have funding within this, within this special fund. So this isn't new dollars, so to speak. So these are coming out of those reserves that have been planned over the life of these vehicles.
Yeah, thank you for updating the council on that and the public on that. You know, it's obviously when we do a lot of these budget amendments, sometimes people think that, you know, these are new dollars coming out, you know, where are we getting these dollars from? But, you know, most of the time, as, as you know, we've been budgeting for, for things like this. And it's a matter, it's a timing issue on when you do it. And even you, even though you have the money in reserves, in order to spend those reserves, you need a budget amendment to do it. And so it shows up in your budget like your new dollars, but it's, it's actually just transferring dollars from one, from one category to the other. So that's why it's municipal government funding is so complicated. Is there any, any other questions? Is there any, any other questions?
I got one.
Go ahead, Councilmember Miller.
Okay, I saw the Senior Services Home Share Program that we funded earlier in the year, and I know that there was also a youth home share program that we were possibly thinking maybe might come around. Are they, are they not in a position to make it this cycle? And if not, are we going to hear from them again, or?
So I could answer that one. So that's something that is still being discussed, and it would be more for a two thousand twenty-two request, not a two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. It's been really frustrating trying to get that youth home program going. We've been working on it for a while. It's just, it's been very frustrating to try to make progress on it. So I'm, thank you for keeping that in the back of your mind, Councilmember Miller.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to adopt ordinance fifteen ninety-eight, which is the final two thousand twenty-one budget amendment. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. That ordinance. Thank you so much, Troy. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
So now we're on to the mayor's report, and I hope Gary is available.
Mr. Mayor, I did not see him on the Zoom at this time.
Okay, that's unfortunate. We've been emailing back and forth. He was hoping to come into City Hall today to, to talk. But that's obviously not the case. So this past couple of weeks, I went through several interviews. I think we had six or seven different interviews, I'm trying to remember, for the, for the Parks Board. And it was one of the highest quality interviews I've done for any of our boards or commissions. It was just amazing, the level of interest and the, and the quality of the candidates that were interviewing. And as we were going through these interviews, one of the things that we realized is that the Parks Board, even though they're in the mix of a lot of work right now, they only hire five commissioners. And all, you know, our other boards have, have seven plus, you know, in some cases. And so I know there's going to be a recommendation that's going to be coming from the Parks Board to increase the, the Parks Board from five to seven. But in the meantime, as we went through the interviews, there is, there is, Gary Larson is really quite an amazing situation where he applied for this spot. He's, Gary was involved in planning for the state parks for like five different years. He designed parks all across the state. Most of the schools and, and in the North, in the North East Fluke schools, he's had a hand in designing that. And so when I found out that Gary, it was this Gary that was applying for this job over the police position, I was extremely excited. And when we interviewed and confirmed that it was him, it was a really kind of a no-brainer to appoint him to the Parks Board. So I'm in, I'm in a move that we appoint Gary Larson to the, to the Parks Commission. Can I have a second?
Second. Mr. Mayor, can you ask everyone to mute who's not speaking? There's really bad background noise.
Yeah, I think that might be yours. There you go. Thank you for turning it off. Appreciate that. So, so it's been moved in second to appoint Gary Larson to the Board of Parks Commissioners. I wish he was here to be able to say a few words. He is a truly remarkable individual who's done just amazing amount of work in this field, and we're very, very lucky to have him. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion is carried, then we're going to officially appoint Gary Larson to the Board of Parks Commissioners. And I know that there's going to be a recommendation coming forward to expand that board as well. So I'm looking forward to that official recommendation happening. So I will now turn it over to the City Managers' Report.
So Mayor, on that point, I do have new information on that request. I could have Jen Burbage come in. They had an action on the Parks Board on that very issue you just spoke about. So maybe if John can bring Jen in.
Hopefully, the sooner the better we get that done. There you are, Jen.
Good evening. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Pratt, and Lacey City Council. That is true, the Park Board actually had a meeting last night, and they are going to be sending a letter through the chair of the Park Board to recommend the number of the Park Board members go from five to seven. They feel more community representation would be beneficial, and that increased board membership would result in more diversity and more expertise to help benefit Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Planning Projects and Programs.
So what will the next step need to be? Dave, will you need to prepare as an ordinance or something like that?
What I was going to offer, Mayor, if you want, we can put this on the Work Session Agenda. If you want to have a fuller discussion amongst council, and you're correct, we would need an ordinance that would officially expand the size of the board.
I mean, is, is there anyone opposed to expanding the Parks Board from five to seven? I didn't think so. So, yeah, can you, can you, we'll have Dave prepare an ordinance, and at our, at our next meeting, we'll take that for consideration.
And so as I understand it, Jen, it's going to go from basically five-member board plus a youth member to a seven-member board with a youth member.
Five regular members to seven regular members, and then the youth member would make eight.
Okay.
And, and well, right now, we just have one of those members, a member of our urban growth area. Sometimes we met, made that two possible members from our urban growth area. Doesn't have to be two, but it could be up to two.
Yeah, the way, the way it's written is that an additional UGA member can be on the board if there isn't someone within the city.
Okay. So, Lenny, do you have something?
And you actually asked exactly what I was going to ask about the urban growth area.
Yeah, so in this circumstance, there could be up to two urban growth members. So I think, I, I, I do think that's important. That's not, hasn't always, we never, you know, in some circumstances, we haven't had the extra two. We had one, or whatever, but I think it's nice to have that available as well. Okay, I think we have direction for that. Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen. So back to City Manager's Report, you do have two items before you. They're both annexations. Ryan Andrews will provide the background. The first one is Pacific and Marvin Road Annexation.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before I get into the, the two annexations that are in front of you this afternoon, I did want to give you an update on an ongoing completed annexation, which is the Capital City Estates Chambers Estates Annexation. As you might remember, you made that ordinance effective September first, so that was yesterday. So as of yesterday, Capital City Estates and Chambers Estates both are, are within the Lacey corporate limits. And currently, we do have our contractor on the ground completing the, the door-to-door census. So that you may hear something going on regarding that, so just wanted to update you on that. Councilmember Greenstein, looks like you have a question.
Yeah, this question probably not for you, Ryan. It's probably for either Scott or Dave, but it's on that annexation. With an upcoming election, how does that work? Are they, since they're in the city as of now, are they able to vote in this upcoming election in city races?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as they meet the voting deadline, which they should have sufficient time to register before the general.
Okay, so even though they're past the primary, there were no primaries in Lacey anyway, but okay, great. Thank you.
And we've been working hand in glove with the Elections Office at Thurston County, understanding, knowing that we were going to be between the primary and the general election, so they, they're aware of that. So we had to meet some ballot printing deadlines, which we've met. So they'll get a Lacey general election ballot mailed to them.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. So the first annexation in front of you is a applicant initiated or a property owner initiated. Annexation the second will be a city initiated. So the first one is, and I need to share my screen, a, as I mentioned, a property owner initiated by the De Trey family. So you can see that, well, okay, so filed by the De Trey family. This is the first step in a two-step process under the petition method, which requires a petition filed by property owners representing a minimum of ten percent of the valuation of an area to be annexed. So as a result of the petition, the council, and the reason it's in front of you tonight is the council needs to pass a motion notifying the petitioners of its approval, rejection, or modification of the annexation, annexation areas geographical boundaries. If the council votes to move the ten percent petition forward, it then goes to the next step, which is a sixty percent petition of the assessed valuation of the area, which is submitted after this is completed. So you can see the annexation area there on your screen. It's located within the Tango Wild Thompson Place Planning Area, within the Lacey Urban Growth Area, between Marvin Road Southeast and Pacific Avenue. It's also located south of what's known as the Regional Athletic Complex Phase Three property. This was part of the actually recently completed annexation around Mushroom Corner. So it will actually kind of append to that, that annexation area. So the, the applicant submitted a, a middle of requesting seven tax parcels, about thirty-one acres. Here is an aerial photograph of the area to be annexed, or the proposed area to be annexed. The property contains an existing single-family residence, which is located off Marvin Road. Behind that is an existing daycare center. The remainder of the property is undeveloped. However, the undeveloped property does have approval through Thurston County for a one hundred and twelve-unit age-restricted manufactured home park known as Marvin Estates. And the current assessed value of this area is a little bit more than ten million dollars. You might notice that on the, on the aerial photograph, there are a total of nine parcels, and I mentioned it was seven. So staff is recommending that two parcels in the southwestern corner that are church, owned by and operated as churches to be added to the annexation area. So both are two point four acres in size. And going to the next one, we do have existing, so this is a map showing power of attorney agreements that we do hold. So you can see that we do hold them for the existing single-family home as well as the daycare center, but also the churches in the lower left-hand corner of the proposed annexation area. These, the assessed values of these added parcels in the lower left-hand corner is about two million dollars. But it's important to note that we do not receive any tax revenue from, from churches. So there wouldn't be any additional tax revenue as a result of adding these to the annexation area. So all told, the, the annexation is about thirty-six acres with in nine total tax parcels with an assessed value of about twelve point four million dollars. Here's the zoning. There's two zones within the annexation areas. You can see on the, the western side, that is moderate-density residential, and on the eastern portion, that is high-density residential. Moderate density allows residential development at eight to sixteen units per acre, and high density is twelve-plus units per acre. Upon annexation, the zoning does not change. We have agreements with Thurston County that requires these to be, to continue once annexed. A little bit about the utilities in the area, so it is, there's a map showing you the water. The properties are located within the City of Lacey's Water Service Area and are served by an existing twelve-inch water line that's located along the northern boundary of the annexation area, as well as an existing sixteen-inch water line located in Pacific Avenue. The lines are adequate to serve the existing and future development of the properties within the annexation area. Here is the sewer service, which is relatively limited. An existing eight-inch step main is located in Pacific Avenue and serves the existing daycare center. You can see it kind of goes cross-country to the north to serve the existing daycare center, and will be extended to serve the manufactured home park as well. Stop sharing my screen at this point. So a little bit about taxes, fees, and services. Typically, as part of an annexation proposal, the council's policies is to require a annexation or a, a, a report detailing, basically a study of what the revenues and expenditures would be. However, with the relatively low assessed value and, and low, you know, there, there wouldn't be a lot of additional services that the city would be providing, that it doesn't seem to be beneficial at this point. The, the main services that would be provided would be streets, and that would be really limited to Pacific Avenue as highway. Marvin Road in this area is also State Highway five-ten. It's important to know too that, you know, with the, the development of the manufactured home park, you know, we do stand to receive some potential revenue associated with that, but it's really going to be very limited. We've run some numbers, and a manufactured home permit costs about four hundred and fifty dollars. So we wouldn't really receive much revenue as a result of the development of the manufactured home park. Obviously, we would receive the property tax revenue after it was developed. So again, the annexation, this is the first step in the, the petition method of annexations in front of you tonight. After filing a petition, the City Council must pass a motion notifying the petition of its approval, rejection, or modification of the annexation areas geographical boundaries. Prior to full City Council review, the Council Utilities Committee has reviewed this as well and is recommending approval. If the council votes to approve the petition, then the applicant moves forward in obtaining a petition from a total of sixty percent of the assessed valuation of the area. Once that's been completed, it moves on to the next step in the annexation process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would move approval of the annexation boundaries. Scribe.
I'll second it. Can we have some discussion? Any discussion? Well, I, I brought this up to our city manager, and I think it's something that we need to discuss. Our, our, our current ordinance basically says that now that this property is adjacent to Lacey boundary, we're going to be requiring them to come into the city if we're going to extend services to them, right? And so it doesn't make sense to then force them to do an annexation study. Now, I, I know in this circumstance, Ryan explains, we don't have to do one. We're not making them do one. But I don't, I don't think we should be making someone do an annexation study when our, our, our own ordinance is requiring them to be annexed into the city in order for us to extend services. And so I just, I want to keep that in the back of everyone's mind here. I know the city manager might not necessarily agree with me on this, but I mean, that's the way we have this set up. You know, this council has been pretty clear that we were in favor of annexing our urban growth area. And so I don't think we should be putting any barriers, future barriers to that, especially when we're requiring that, we're not going to require them to come into the city, or we're not going to extend services. So, I mean, Ryan, can you speak to that at all? I mean, why, why would, in the future, why would we ever require someone to do an annexation study?
Oh, I think the obvious benefits are that, you know, the, the applicant would provide the information on what the, the revenue would be versus the expenditures. And so, you know, it, there, it would be a better informed process, especially for a larger annexation. Maybe it's, it's not as appropriate when you have, you know, relatively smaller annexations. But if you were to have a large annexation, you would want, in my opinion, you would want the applicant to kind of flesh out or the property owner to flesh out what those revenues and expenditures were, so that, you know, you are, you're going into, you know, reviewing the annexation with eyes wide open, so that, you know, you weren't just assuming things maybe that weren't right. An example of this is, you know, the Hill Betty Annexation that was completed probably six or seven years ago now. That, that one did complete an annexation study, and I, I, that's really what set these kind of wheels in motion to require that. You know, that was a relatively large annexation. It did have a, a number of different, you know, properties within it, both developed and undeveloped, and, and I think it was very helpful at that point to get that information from an applicant. My personal opinion is I don't think you necessarily need to change the policies. I think, you know, we can look at these on a case-by-case basis and figure out what is appropriate. I think, you know, we can look at these on a case-by-case basis and figure out what is appropriate for an annexation, what what the appropriate level would be for an annexation study or not.
Councilor Greenstein.
I mean, I I recall distinctly that the reason we put it in was exactly what Ryan said. We want to make sure we're looking at revenue and expense to make sure it pencils out financially. I would not be in favor of removing that requirement for that exact reason. But I think we're logical, like in this case, waiving it makes sense. I I don't see any reason that we would remove the policy. I think we just, when it makes sense, we waive the the requirement.
Well, the thing is, is that that was before we we put a requirement that they had to come into the city where we wanted to extend services. So could you imagine the circumstance where our ordinance says they have to come in the city where we're not going to extend water and sewer, but they come up with an annexation study that says, oh, it's gonna, maybe it doesn't look beneficial to the city, so we're going to say no?
I could see that as a possibility. I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's likely, but I can certainly see the possibility where we wouldn't extend because it financially doesn't make. I mean, there's a reason that we haven't done Tango Wild and Thompson Place at all, right? And the whole area is because it doesn't pencil out at this point. It would cost more than we could possibly, you know, recoup.
But there's not a single applicant that could possibly bring in all all of Tango Wild and Thompson Place.
Well, no, not a single applicant, of course not.
And so that's what I'm talking about. These are single, these are single applicants. I mean, yeah, the Betty Hill Trust was probably the largest landowner we had in in Lacey. But we're not, there's no.
Well, I think, I think, I think there's two, I think there's two policy issues that are kind of going on, and they're somewhat converging. As you recall, when Britain Parkway Phase Two came in, there was a concern about those developments going beyond our standards or lack of our standards for the city. So we were concerned about the county building something that wouldn't fit our current residential standards. So there really was a need to ensure that if we're going to extend utilities, they meet with our current standards. The issue of having, you know, a study, if you will, an economic analysis, really goes back even probably over a decade. We just want to make sure policymakers are fully informed. If we're going to take on new obligations, new residents, either existing or potentially future, does that degrade the service levels that we currently provide our current residents? And do we have the wherewithal and the budget to absorb those? I mean, it's just a pragmatic thing to do when we talk about that. Now, we could revisit that, how those two policies work together, and maybe that's what we need to do. But there, they do need to coexist somehow because they serve two different purposes.
Yeah. I could understand if there's a large annexation that comes in that we that would let, you know, that there's a different circumstance. But when it's a single applicant that's coming in and we're requiring them to come in, I can't imagine then we're going to require them to do a study in order to come in. It just, it it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Those are two different circumstances. I agree. But that's where our policies do not line up. And so I just, I I just wanted to put that out there. I'm I'm glad in this circumstance we're not requiring them to do the study. If we did require them to do this study, I would be not happy about that because we're requiring them to come into the city in order to receive the services. So I know it's two separate things, but I think it's it's worth considering. I'm having a conversation, a future conversation about. Is there any other, is there any other, Councilor Cox?
Just a question. Is is there a legal reason why for, and let's use this case in point, that we could not waive the policy for this one, but still keep it in place so that we can meet the conditions that Scott and Ryan were talking about?
So that is what Ryan's recommending, that it is going to be waived in this specific instance.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Is there any other, is there any anything else? Then there's a motion, a second to ask this Pacific and Marvin Marvin Annexation Project 19-239. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 I did, I did have a question before you, before you finished, and I did have one question. I I just want to be clear what what an annexation study entails, cost and time, is what I'm thinking. Does anybody have an answer?
Can you explain that real quick, Ryan?
Yeah, so it, you know, it, an annexation study, there there, you know, are no exact parameters in the city council's policies as far as what an annexation study needs to entail. But, you know, there really is looking at, you know, population, you know, expenditures, revenues, you know, land uses, those types of things that that, you know, would would go into a a study. I I'd be happy to, you know, follow up, Councilmember Miller, with maybe a a previous annexation study that you could take a look at to get an idea of what one would entail. The city, the city produced one for Tango Wild Thompson Place. So that's a city-developed report. But we also have previous ones like the Hill Betty that that have been done privately, and I can, I can make sure you receive a copy of that.
So it sounds kind of like it's like this comprehensive summary of demographics and and revenues and these types of things that they would actually have to hire somebody to produce for them?
That's correct, yeah. So at least the ones that we've we've had completed are are completed by, you know, planning consultants. So they're they're done by outside consultants. They they require, you know, a little bit of expertise beyond what a typical property owner would be able to complete on their own.
So my recommendation is that we we bring this forward to a work session to talk it out specifically about these, this issue too, about a single applicant in this circumstance. Anyway, I I would, I would like to to have that conversation at a work session so we can just be all be on the same page and know what we're up against. So there's been a motion, there's a second, we have had the ayes, yays. Is there any nays? Seeing none, then that motion carries. Then we'll go on to our our next annexation project, the Lake Lois Pacific Avenue.
Yeah, give me one more second here. Okay, so the second annexation, similar process, same same kind of point in the process. But the difference is is that this is a city-initiated annexation, and and this was actually a city council priority to annex this area around Lake Lois to help kind of more regularize the boundaries in this section of the Lacey Urban Growth Area. So the city has initiated this initial 10% petition for the area around Lake Lois between Kenwood Street and Carpenter Road. Just like the last one, the next, the first step is the 10% petition. The next step in this process would be the 60% petition if the city council passes a motion to approve to send this on to the the next level. So the area proposed for annexation is also, just like the last one, located in the Tango Wild Thompson Place Planning Area within the Lacey Urban Growth Area, located east of Carpenter Road and west of Kenwood Street Southeast. It's north of the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail and south of the Aldea Glen subdivision. The area includes approximately 95 acres and 63 separate tax parcels. The current assessed value of all these parcels is about $15 million. The City of Lacey has initiated the annexation on behalf of those parcels within the annexation where the city holds power of attorney agreements regarding annexation and for those that are city-owned. The current assessed value of all these parcels, both the ones that the city owns and then also those that we do hold power of attorney for, is about $9.2 million, which is over the 60% required under the petition method. Eleven parcels are owned by the city and another four parcels are churches. Both are exempt from the payment of property taxes. So this does not have a large amount of revenue associated with the the annexation of this this area. Here's an aerial photograph. The area proposed to be annexed is a mixture of undeveloped property, critical areas and buffers, and existing low-density residential uses. Lake Lois is actually not a lake, but is a designated wetland, which makes up the headwaters of Woodland Creek. Lake Lois and its associated buffers are largely owned by the city and designated as Lake Lois Park and Habitat Preserve. Another wetland noted as Goose Pond is on the property owned by the City of Lacey in the southern portion of the annexation area. The area contains approximately 46 dwelling units and a population of about 100 people. Here's the zoning. It's a mixture of zoning districts, including low-density residential zero to four, which is kind of the light green color, and low-density three to six, which is the yellow. Moderate density is located on the eastern edge of the annexation area along Kenwood Street, and that's kind of a light tan. The green is open space institutional for Lake Lois and other environmentally sensitive properties. Little bit about the boundary, the area proposed for annexation is a logical extension and and basically gets rid of what is almost an unincorporated island, not quite, but it it's close. It's a logical extension of the city limits and would help alleviate some of these boundary issues as it would extend the the eastern boundary, it would extend to the the eastern edge of the Kenwood Street right away. So you can see on the the screen here, those parcels that we do hold power of attorney agreements for, those are the ones that are in pink. And then, you know, in addition to that, we do have city property in here as well, which gets us to that 60%. We have had one private property owner, the the property owner that lives just north of Goose Pond has signed, it has been interested in annexation for some time and has signed on to the petition as well. Little bit about the utilities, the properties are located in the City of Lacey's Water Service Area and served by a combination of city water lines, small private water services, and private wells. An existing City of Olympia water line is located within Pacific Avenue. However, it does not serve the area. The Lacey Water System that does serve the area is adequate to serve the existing and future development of the properties within the proposed annexation area, understanding that the future development in this in this area is going to be very limited based on the critical areas. Sewer, sewer is limited to an existing three-inch step main located in Kenwood Street. So you can see kind of a light green dash line on the eastern edge of the annexation area, as well as an eight-inch force main in Carpenter Road located at the lift station at Seventh Avenue Southeast. The majority of the residential parcels in here are served by onsite septic system. So much like our discussions on the previous item, you know, talking about governmental services, you know, this being a city-initiated annexation, we don't have the same requirement for an annexation study, but we did route this out to various city departments to get feedback. And there's information contained in the staff report regarding police, streets, and some information that we've received from Thurston County on Pacific Avenue. So talking a little bit about police calls to this area, anticipated police calls are about 100 to 200 calls per per year. In a non-pandemic year, our city police department responds to up to 46,000 calls per year. So 100 to 200 calls is not a large demand for service. But we did receive comments back from the police chief concerned that, you know, paired with other recent annexations, that it does kind of start to compound calls for service based on accumulative impact. You know, we add more property, we add more calls for service, and that tends to compound itself over time. As far as the utilities, the streets in the area, you know, we we would maintain Carpenter Road, the Bridge Over Carpenter Road, Pacific Avenue, Kenwood Street. Most of those have been developed to their full kind of development, except for there is some gaps in the sidewalks in Kenwood Street. Those streets that are internal, like Lake Lois Drive and some others, are kind of old roads without sidewalks and without a lot of, you know, kind of urban level of service when it comes to streets. Having said that, the streets are in good shape. So the there's information in your staff report that says, you know, the streets are in relatively good shape. So it's not that we're, you know, we're going to be absorbing streets that are in poor condition, but they understand that they may be lacking some amenities. Talking more about the streets, Thurston County did make us aware, staff aware, that they have obtained a federal grant to repave and make ADA improvements to Pacific Avenue between the city, current city limits and Union Mills Road. And so that would include the front edge along Pacific Avenue near Lake Lois if we were to annex that. The the county has agreed to move forward with the project with the understanding if we were to annex that any of the grant match would be the responsibility of the city. Preliminary estimates indicated that our proportionate share, we wouldn't go out, we wouldn't pay for it to go all the way out to Union Mills. We would go to Kenwood Street, would be approximately $87,000. A specific agreement would need to be brought forth if the area is annexed prior to Thurston County going to bid on the project, which is anticipated basically in two years, August of 2023. There is the potential, though, that the federal grant will pay for 100% of the repaving projects. This is the same grant that the city received for the Super T project at College Street and the Elm Highway. So it, you know, worst-case scenario, we're anticipating that the city would have to fund $87,000 for the grant match for that project if this was to be annexed. So just like the other annexation, the process is that the, you know, the city is basically the petitioner. If you do decide to move this forward, the 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 next step is that 60% petition, which, as I mentioned, we do have enough between the power of attorney and and the city property and the one signatory to move forward on the annexation through the 60% method. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any other motion?
I I moved that we approve the proposed Lake Lois Pacific Avenue annexation.
I guess.
Second.
Moving second? Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor?
So the quick question is, on the lower end of, why didn't it extend over to include Bismarck over to Carpenter Street rather than just come down with that little point to square it off better?
We already, oh, that's already in the city, Deputy Mayor.
I don't think so, not for that one spot. Brian?
Well, the idea is, I'm not, I'm not familiar where Bismarck Street is, but, you know, the idea was is that this would take it to our current eastern boundary, which is just between a house that we own on on Woodland Creek property and the Log Cabin Tavern, which is basically Kenwood Street. And so it would square off between, you know, Kenwood Street and at everything west of that to get rid of the jagged boundary. I'm not familiar with the Bismarck Street area.
Okay. And it just looks like it's a slightly irregular boundary. That's all I was questioning, but, okay.
Yeah, when you look at the city map, it it lines up pretty good. This, it's like a puzzle piece that we just stuck in there and squared everything off, with the exception of the Woodland Creek Park.
Deputy Mayor, I think Bismarck Lane is already within the city limits.
It's it, okay.
I think it's in the Coda Apartments.
Okay, my my mistake then.
Does that sound right, Ryan?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I see where you're talking about. So, yeah, Bismarck, so that that area is already in the in the city limits. That is the, yeah, the, within the apartment complex that's there.
Okay, okay.
So if you go back to the first map that's associated with with your packet, the area that's in green is already in the city limits. The area that's in purple is currently in the urban growth area.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to approve this annexation, go on to the next steps. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
Eric, Council, just another quick update. So again, under Resolution 1067, these are interlocal agreements that are 25,000 or less or no cost to the city that the city manager can sign. I signed an agreement with Thurston County last month that continues our relationship that's been going on since 2010 to continue to do water quality samples at Hicks Lake. So that's for a two-year agreement, and it's just under $12,000. This helps us be able to share with the public the quality of the water, but also learns to issues like blue-green algae. Just want to inform Council of that interlocal agreement.
Great, thank you. So now we'll go on to Senate and General Committees and Finance and Economic Committee. First, we had, well, I am agenda, the first I am was the 2021 Budget Amendment Ordinance creeping that we just went over. The next item was our 2021 Um, the next item was our twenty-twenty-one mid-year financial report. And, uh, a couple of highlights in that, uh, I, I guess the, the good news is that so far our, our general fund expenditures are under budget and our, our general fund revenues are, are, um, over budget. So that's everything that you like to see in a, in a good budget. Um, uh, the, there are of course, um, some, you know, good reasons for some variances in there. And as I mentioned earlier, it's really hard to, uh, compare year to year budgets, even within a, uh, a, a yearly budget to try to explain, uh, differences, especially when there's, uh, big changes, you know, sometimes it's, it's timing, sometimes it's, uh, a, you know, there's a difference between something going from, from one category to the other and it shows up as the, uh, uh, you know, within that budget. But, um, I, I would say that so far that this year, I think things are looking pretty good. I know, um, Troy just recently sent out, there's another, um, the, the latest sales tax, um, report, which showed, I think was the highest ever collected sales tax in, in a month, um, in Lacey's history is. Is, is, is that right Scott? Or is Troy still here? I mean, I think that's the highest, the highest I think I've ever seen in Lacey's history in one month.
It was.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty amazing, to considering where, you know, where we're at and what we've gone through, um, to, to have our highest year ever and it not be, right, uh, a, a November or December, you know, time period where we typically seen those big spikes because of, of spending around, um, the holidays, you know, and so I was very, uh, pleased with, with seeing that report. Um, there's always, of course, Troy always likes to put caveats to any good news. Uh, when we see, uh, a good budget report, um, and.
As a good finance director should.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, he, he's just the opposite of like, uh, the worst case scenario, oh, yeah, yeah, he's, he's, you can always find her, so some reason be, uh, pessimistic, but I, I think in general, uh, things are looking really good, um, for our, um, our mid, our, 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 uh, mid-year financial report. Um, the billions are right, um, where we expect them to be as well. So, um, that, I think the really the, the biggest part of this meeting was our, our community and economic development report from. For, um, and this was something that, you know, I, I had asked to, you know, possibly take a look at as well. There's just been a lot of development that's happened within Lacey and it's continued to happen within Lacey. I think that we'll get, um, in the future, we'll get kind of more of these regular reports of what's going on. Um, but, you know, for example, um, we've had, uh, you know, of course, two hundred and forty-five residential units have been approved. We're going to start seeing that, you know, come, come down more and more, but, you know, we're, we're just seeing a, a lot of, of projects, especially continuing projects in nor- in northeast, uh, Lacey. The, the North Point Project, the Olympic Behavior and Health Project, the, um, the Bridge Development along the Hugum Bay Road and the, the three warehouses, of course, the, the, the Wash Dot Headquarters, you know, um, there is just a lot going on, um, in, in the city of Lacey from a development standpoint, and I think it really, um, tells you how, you know, how much we've grown as a city and how we've continually grown out on the, on the commercial side as well. Um, and how much more, you know, developed northeast Lacey has, has really become. And this is all before the, you know, the, the future town center that we're, you know, hoping to see, um, in, in that area as well. So I, I feel really good about where, where we're at, um, from a, a financial standpoint with the city. And you could see that the continued interest in development within the city of Lacey, it's, uh, it's pretty good to see. So that is my report and I'll turn it over to the Deputy Mayor for the General Government.
Um, the General Government and Public Safety Committee met August twenty-fourth as well, and we had four items. Um, the food truck status update was given by our Economic Development Coordinator Wesley Nguyen. And as for the audience's, um, uh, knowledge, the food truck, uh, uh, market was established in April twentieth of this, or thirtieth, I'm sorry, of this year. And they had a rotating, um, Wednesday through Friday, uh, schedule, uh, developed, and then it was expanded. And then later a pop-up market with live music was added, including three vendors, uh, for home-based goods and to fresh produce vendors. The addition was found to create a peak flow of customers. Seven total food trucks operate on rotation at the depot. The food trucks offer a wide variety of food and a variety of ownerships, including women-owned, veteran-owned and minority-owned, among others. Uh, conservative estimates reported by vendors indicate thirty sales per lunch in June and twenty-five in July. And what, when, as we were discussing this, one of the things that, uh, the weaknesses is the food demand of often would run out of food rather quickly, and so that is one of the challenges. On the other report is, we had a report, um, on public records activities. And the city has successfully reported to J-Lark, which is, uh, the Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee, um, on their twenty-twenty public records data. And some of the highlights include, uh, two thousand three hundred and fifteen public records requests received. Seventy-three percent fulfilled electronically, twenty-two percent were closed with no responsive records, and eighty-one percent were closed with, within five business days. Uh, so we spent an estimated four hundred and forty-four thousand eleven, uh, eleven responses to public records requests in twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty-one, which isn't completed yet, uh, the city has received one thousand two hundred and twenty-four public records requests from January first to June thirtieth. And it is estimated a total of two thousand four hundred and forty-eight will be received by the year's end. Um, the third item, we've already covered boards and commission standards, protocols and ground rules handbook update. And we've made, um, the council has already approved that. The last item was a city website update, which is great. Um, this was, um, talked about the Brew House Media is assisting the city with a new updated website design. And to increase the accessibility of the website, uh, for the community, accessibility tools were incorporated to the website, including additional languages, text sizes, spacing and color contrasts. And staff anticipate completion of the new website by the end of the year. And that's my report. I think I need another allergy pill. My voice is scratchy. Darn.
About Councilmember, oh, uh, the Land Use Committee.
Yes, okay, like the, the two previous reports, Land Use and Environment Committee met on August twenty-fourth. Um, we had a multi-topic agenda, the first of which was an update on the Thurston Regional Climate Action Plan Implementation Strategy. Um, Je- Jessica Brandt from our planning staff, uh, explained that the mitigation plan is being integrated into the environmental el- environmental element of our comprehensive plan upon adoption. And it's a policy framework essentially to guide the city in achieving carbon reduction targets. So phase three of the plan is, is a one-year agreement, which we're currently in. And the scope of this work is focused on, I take that back. Phase three is a one-year agreement and scope of the work is focused on regional implement implementation options and approaches. Uh, phase three is ongoing in parallel with the city's local actions, review and implementation planning. So the regional, um, committee has asked the Thurston Regional Planning Council staff to focus on gathering information about energy efficiency, program implementation options and local and national case studies to inform the particip- participating jurisdictions about how we might implement such pro- programs. The reason for this is because built environment is a really big part of the carbon output for our region. Let's see what we are on this. The city could also consider pursuing and implementing a program at the local level without regional partners that would increase capacity to a regional level later. The, um, TRPC implementation options will be in draft form by October and hopefully finalized by December. Uh, long-range targets based on the most current science and methodology for emissions reductions keep the city on a path to mitigating climate change for future generations. Regional and local approaches are key to achieving a coordinated and collaborative response to climate mitigation. The plan requires strategic investment and long-term commitment as well as re-priorit- re-prioritization of existing resources to implement. So successful implementation is dependent upon full participation from the community to meet targeted carbon reduction goals. The, uh, next report was on solar and energy efficiency permitting process. And this is related to the carbon, I mean, the climate mitigation plan, which has a number of actions that call for expedited permit processing for projects such as solar arrays, electric vehicle chargers and energy efficiency projects. Uh, currently, it's relatively straightforward and predictable to permit these types of projects through our building department. Uh, for example, an over-the-counter electrical permit with an inspection is essentially all that's required for both a solar array and a new electric vehicle charging station. Energy efficient projects can mean a number of things though, such as sealing air leaks, adding insul- insulation, installing energy efficient windows, doors, skylights, programmable thermostats, sealed ducts and the like. So some of these require, these projects would not require permit. And for most projects that do, the permits are still issued over the counter and can be issued in this little as five minutes with a maximum turnaround time of thirty minutes. Um, we also, just for, um, information only, um, we remembered, or Scott helped us remember that the, this committee's name was changed back in November twenty eighteen to include environment on it. So it, it is officially the Land Use and Environment Committee. So there's, um, it's just a formality and it reflects, as you can see from the agenda we just dealt with, some of the work of the committee, and that's my report.
Thank you. Now we're on to four exclusion three reports and I'm up first, but I do not have a report. So Deputy Mayor? And it's on mute, but.
I, I don't have a report either. Wow.
Then, thank you, your cops.
All right. Well, I have two reports make up for you guys. Uh, Regional Housing Council, um, met recently, uh, two major actions coming out of that meeting. Um, there, the council's finance committee reported that phase two of the permanent supportive housing project at twenty-eight twenty-eight Martin Way has a one point seven million funding gap. Um, this is the kind of gap that we see a lot of right now with sharp rises in construction materials, uh, shortages and the like. Um, this is, this project is by the Low Income Housing Institute and it would add sixty-three more units of permanent supportive housing. Um, the Regional Housing Council members agreed, uh, with our financial committee's recommendation that we should make up the difference provided that they exhaust other sources of revenue first, such as the housing trust before they come looking to us for that money. Um, the recommendation was that we use what's known as fourteen oh six dollars. Uh, this is, um, money that comes from recording fees and if you all will recall, we entered into an interlocal agreement uh, where we pool our funds with those from the county and from the cities of Olympia and Tomwater. Um, if this is to be done, each party to the interlocal agreement needs to sign off, sign off on a conditional award letter for that. Um, and we have a deadline coming up of September fifteenth to make this happen. So I'm asking you all whether you want to perhaps schedule, um, a discussion on this at our meeting next week so that you can more fully understand, you know, what that's all about, or perhaps tonight if there's no question about it.
Scott, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I just want to make sure council is comfortable with. I just want to make sure.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure council is comfortable with discussion as Councilman Cox stated. The fourteen oh six dollars is very specific to each jurisdiction since each jurisdiction authorized that through ordinance. And so the Regional Housing Council did recommend a project and so each legislative body of that agreement needs to endorse it. And so what the proposal will be is taking two years of our fourteen oh six money or up to, and we pledge it to help ease that one point seven million dollar gap. But we definitely can go to a work session next week. We need a little bit more time, but we can present a, uh, maybe a little more detail on the staff report and maybe some maps and location.
My, my only question I have is do we have, will Lacey have access to, to that facility?
Of course.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Greens, then?
I was gonna say, I, um, I guess I, I, we have a deadline of the fifteenth, so I know we have to act on this pretty quickly. Um, I know we don't typically like to take votes at work sessions, but in this case, I think we probably will need to, um, I, I'm, I'm in support of this. I was at the meeting that Carolyn was referring to and this is exactly what the fourteen oh six money was designed for. It's for dealing with the homeless situation and the housing situation. And we've already entered the agreement with our counterpart jurisdictions to pull the fourteen oh six money. It's just a formality that it has to come back to each council to authorize the actual use of it. There's a good chance the money won't even be used because of other funds that are possibly available. But this is so they can move forward with the project because we're get, basically guaranteeing that if the other funds don't come available, we're going to backfill. So I, I'm in full support.
Well, Lenny, if you're in full support, then, um, let's, can we, can we just do an, give the city manager? Can we authorize the city manager to go forward with this right now? Scott?
If council's comfortable, we can, uh, definitely draft a letter and commit those resources with, um, additional contracts with Lehigh to ensure that the funds are being spent as per the recommendation of RHC.
Do you need a motion?
Is there anyone, okay, can I get him, can I get him a motion, please?
I'm, I moved that we, um, give the city manager, um, authority to draft the letter of, to, uh, utilize the uh, fu- um, funds. That cover it enough?
Can I, can I make a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
I, I think the motion you want to adopt would be something to the fact that the council endorses the recommendation by the Regional Housing Council to provide up to two years of fourteen oh six funds in support of the Lehigh project.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Second. Right.
Any, any further discussion? All, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Aye.
The 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 motion carries.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Um, the other piece of news out of the Housing Council was um that there is a parcel of nearly six acres of land for sale that could be used for short-term RV live-aboard parking, and this would help relieve the situation over on Enson Road near St. Pete's Hospital. Um, the council's technical team recommends um long-term use of the land before a transitional housing program such as a tiny house village, and that federal recovery funds be used to acquire the land. Don't have a whole lot of details yet, but that's um in the offing. And then Inter-City Transit Authority met last night, and there were also two issues of significance. Uh, first is, authority members approved a resolution in support of a new policy uh requiring or establishing COVID vaccinations as a condition of employment for staff. The measure provides medical and religious exemptions, but unlike the recently uh approved Thurston County policy, it does not allow employees to opt out by getting weekly COVID tests. Uh that that policy will take effect on October twenty ninth, so we now have state, county, intercity transit, and City of Olympia all are requiring this now. And then the other other action we took last night was to purchase twenty-three propane-fueled uh buses for the dial lift program. We're speeding this up a little bit, I think, kind of like on the the city ordering the Ford trucks um to get in line because supplies are limited and we don't want to be caught out without enough vehicles to replace the ones that are aging out of the fleet, so that was unanimously approved as well. And that's my report.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Hey, just a couple of things. Uh, TCOM nine-one-one met yesterday, and just a couple of things from that, from that meeting. Um, the budget looks really good. Revenue is actually up seventeen percent from last year. Uh expenses are below budget, revenue above bu- budget, similar to Lacy's budget, operating very well. Um, one big thing of note is the radio system that we've, you know, you've been hearing me talk about now for quite some time is looking like it's gonna be probably delayed to get it finalized by three to six months. This is because of L and I. L and I has to inspect the shelter boxes that go on each of the towers to protect the equipment, and they are running three to six months behind in those inspections. So until they do those inspections, we can't go forward with installation of that equipment. And uh that's, that's gonna delay the project for probably up to, like I said, as much as six months. Uh, that that's it for TCOM. There was one thing I did want to mention from EMS. We, it's not a, there's been no meeting since our last report. But I was asked um as part of EMS, myself as vice chair and Stan Moon as chair were asked to sign a letter to the governor. Um, basically, what we have going on is with the new mandate for vaccinations for medical and for state employees and medical firefighters, because they're EMTs, and of course, paramedics, all fall under that medical requirement. Uh, the problem we have is we're at about seventy-five percent vaccinated among that group. That would leave twenty-five percent of the employees in the fire districts and paramedics, medic, medic one unable to work as of, I think it's October seventeenth is the date. The bottom line is, we do not have enough firefighters and paramedics in this county to provide service if twenty-five percent of our workers can't work. Uh, we will be so shorthanded that we could not even cover it with overtime. This would be a serious detriment to our community. So the letter that we've sent to the step, to the governor is asking for an alternative, such as what Thurston County did, to allow for test, weekly testing if, in fact, they, you know, aren't vaccinated. So we we don't know what the result of that is. The letter just went out. We're not alone in this problem. Um, fire districts and counties all up and down the I five corridor have the exact same issue. Tacoma's got the same issue. We just can't operate with twenty-five percent less people. That's, that's a hundred and fifty firefighters in Thurston County, and the bottom line is, there's just no way to cover those, that many shifts with overtime. So just wanted to make the council aware.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Miller?
I have no report. I do have TRPC tomorrow and uh LTAC next week, but as of today, there's nothing.
Uh, Councilmember Kunkel?
Okay, Mayor. So my only report is for SWAC. Uh, we met yesterday, and we had an update on the WARC conceptual master plan. We're improving on the logistics and efficiency of operations on the ground. And we're taking our time making sure that uh we're leaving no stone unturned. There was a presentation of Paint Care Services, which is a nonprofit that helps with post-consumer paint stewardship and recycling, and uh we also reviewed uh final draft of amended bylaws for for the uh for the board. And that is it. That is my report.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's time tonight. As I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, I, it's hard to believe it's already September. I just uh don't know where this year went at all. My uh daughter's already went through her start of her junior year in high school, and I don't know how that happened either, so just, just time just keeps like going away, but uh uh here we are, here we are in September, and I, you know, um, just, it's just amazing. Um, but with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. As always, keep it classy, Lacy. I'll call this meeting a journey.